Okay. Glenda Hackenmack? Go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Okay. We believe that in order to make sure that we're providing the best services for the taxpayers, citizens of the Quincy community, we believe that an RFP process would be the best way to start this so we can compare the services that we currently provide as a city for garbage, recycling, and yard waste to the services that can be offered outside of the community. One of the ordinance states that the city is the sole responsibility to collect the garbage, all of the garbage and rubbish. And so in the packet that you were provided last week, it does state two different household listings. One of them is 14,987 residents, and that would be the total number of household residents four and under for the city of Quincy. The other one is listed as 8,600, and that is what the city currently collects utilizing the garbage sticker program. So I would welcome any questions in regards to your packet that you received for the RFP process.
I have a couple of questions. Actually, it didn't come up until this afternoon after I was going through this again. And I know this, but the RFP process is relatively vague, and we let the bidders basically present what they want to fulfill our needs.
Correct.
I guess my question would be, is the intent of what we've been presented, I don't want to end up with a hybrid system like we have at Waste Row to Water now. I would much rather see it either be all private or all, or we buy trucks and keep doing it ourselves. Is that the administration's intent moving forward?
The administration at this point is basically just seeking to compare services. We really don't have an overall goal of intent. We just want to make sure that we're providing the best, most effective, efficient services that we can. And in order to judge that and look at a scale, we feel that we need to compare that to outside sources. That would be, you know, if that were to come about, that would be placed before council for your decision and your debate.
Well, I guess where I'm getting at is my intent would be that it would be one or the other. So in order to be fair to the folks that are going to be bidding this, I think we need to make sure that is an option that they can access or that they can feel comfortable doing with, so we're not, you know, it's not an apples to oranges thing. It's apples to apples, and we get a good idea. And one of the other things that concerned me too about the information we presented, you know, as we all know, business or whatever, all of our costs, or a lot of our costs are to do with personnel.
Correct.
I'm a little troubled by the, is the intent, if we go private, will we lose people or will we, I mean, how's that going to work? Do you envision that working?
I don't know at this point that that can actually be determined. I know based upon the ordinances for the city, it is the entire city is supposed to be, have one sole collector for garbage and rubbish. And I guess seeking out this RFP, that's why in your budget forms, we gave you an apples to apples comparison that we would expect to receive from the companies that would be putting in the RFP. So there would be an equal comparison, fair playing ground. And you would be able to look, this is one option, this is one option, and this is one option. And you could see across the board how it played out.
Okay. Thank you.
More questions? Concerns? Suggestions? Yes.
Let me ask one. Has there been any talk about recycle, like to save costs, maybe possibly only picking up a couple times a month or every other week or anything if they're trying to cut back on costs? Would that help matters any?
That's one of the options that we did put in the RFP. That certainly is going to be for the people that respond to the RFP to put in there how many times per month that they do pick up the recycle. And I guess that would be something we would look at after the RFPs are submitted.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Chairman. Are we going to ask the vendors to bid on the 8,600 number or the 14,900 number?
We're going to be asking them to bid on the 14,987 number. That gives them the full city, which when we have spoke to various vendors and other cities, they said that is really the only way to give a full, equal apples to apples comparison. The 8,600 number we just put in there so that way the council had a view of what we currently provide service to.
If you're comparing apples to apples for vendors, that's fine, but if you're comparing vendors versus city employees, city services, aren't you trying to, aren't you almost handcuffing the city employee?
No. If you look at your, the profit and loss sheet that you received on 2015, it shows a comparison of 10 trucks and 14,987 households. So that's going to give us a good scale to come back to and explain it to you and say, these are the numbers we're looking at. This isn't apples to apples. If we went full city as the ordinance states we're supposed to be doing, this is what they can do it for, and this is what our expenses as a city doing it would be.
So currently, the city is only picking up 8,600 residents.
Correct.
And we're asking the vendor to do an RFP for 14,997 or what you said. Okay. Then what, is there any thought of looking at the process that we currently do to try to make some efficiencies and some better, more productivity before we go out for RFP?
I think Marty and Richie could probably speak to that better as far as, you know, how they evaluate the garbage and recycling program on a regular basis. I'm sure it's like every department, we're always trying to look at ways to be more efficient and cut costs, but I can let them address that if that would explain it better.
Well, one of my, one of my concerns has been picking up garbage on private property. I mean, we have an extensive list of residents that are in trailer parks and nursing homes and condominiums and so forth that are all on private property, and we're picking those people up. To me, it would make no sense to go privatize garbage and recycling and then pick it up on private property.
Well, and that 14,987 number does not, that does not include like the nursing homes and the private properties. It's four residential household, four units and under. So if they're above that, that number is not included in that.
So going forward, we're eliminating, cutting from private property?
I can't, I don't think at this time currently we're going to, but when we're looking at the RFP, that would be how we would be able to compare it to see if that's the step we need to go to.
Is there any thought on automation as far as buying trucks with, for our current city employees with more automated service?
Yes. And that is what the RFP is requesting, and that is what, if it does stay in-house with the city, then we would be having to look at automated trucks because that's the direction that the industry is certainly going in. It would certainly reduce, I can't say eliminate, but totally reduce workman's comp claims because you would only have one person per truck. You would not have the health hazards, the dangers, you know, the falls, the trips, whatever, because you would be in the truck the majority of the time using the automated service. And as the trucks continue to age, that is something that we're going to have to be looking at is the purchase of new trucks.
So we're assuming that the RFP is going to come back with automated trucks?
Yes. Yes. And in the numbers that you provided for 2015, those numbers with the estimates of 260,000 per truck, and that's just an estimate, but that is for automated trucks. And that's what we're expecting to get, you know, in the RFP is automation because, you know, the industry, that's the way it's heading, and that's the way the companies and the other cities we've talked to, that's the way they are.
So currently, we, as a city, have no experience with automation, so we have no way to compare apples to apples.
Correct.
We're just making estimates.
As far as how the automated would work?
Right.
Yes. But that is the way the industry is going, and that's what, you know, for cost effectiveness, that's the way the city is looking at going.
So one would assume that if you did automation, that you'd have totes, you would have 60 gallons or 100 gallons on whatever size they are, then, then your recycling would go drop off significantly because it'd just be easier for people to dump their stuff into tote as opposed to recycling. Was that a fair assumption?
We've discussed this for quite extensive length, and we think it would kind of level out because we would be going up in household residents if we went to the full city serving. A lot of the people that currently recycle are going to continue to recycle just because, you know, they're believing in the green and, you know, keeping the environment that way. But I do believe there would be a large portion that yes, they would not recycle to the extent that they do now.
Thank you.
Got a question. Would, would the people that have private garbage pickup now that pay monthly services, would they still be able to utilize that private service or would that be something that would be eliminated as a city? You know, there's folks in town that have, company from Pittsfield that comes up and picks up on Wednesdays, and they pay a monthly fee there, or there's another, you know, there's several companies that pick up and they choose to go that route. Is that figured into the amount of, you know, are they still going to be able to utilize that private company?
I'm sorry?
No, the, if you read the RFP, it's for the whole entire city of Quincy. So if you had a private hauler now, if you go that direction, you'd be utilizing one service because it's hard for companies to get a number on just 8,600 households, especially with the way that we currently operate in the city of Quincy. It's really hard for our current services now. You know, people just buy the stickers, they don't sign up for the program, and so it'd be really hard to get a number on it. If you actually read the ordinances, there's only supposed to be one company providing it. And so, of course, it would be the choice of the council, what you guys wanted to do, but under the best scenario, it would be only one provider for that, for that garbage recycle.
They could still haul commercial.
Yes.
They just couldn't haul residential. Right now, they're, I don't want to say illegal, but the reality is we're not enforcing the ordinance. None of these people are living by the ordinance right now. We're the sole, we're the sole waste hauler for residential.
And it would most, it would most likely be, of course, you can't promise it, but of the cities that, cities that we pull, then the average household per month is paying about $14 a month. I believe the private, you know, the private haulers now are a little bit more than that, so it could be a savings for them, but it would be the entire city.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I got a couple more that came up. So, so basically, basically if this would go through where we could privatize, it's locked in. I read through there, and I saw the city comparison, I believe there was one or two cities that had, you could make a choice of a number of vendors?
Some of the larger cities have that option.
Are we too small to do that? Is that the thought on that?
Yes. Plus, we're also looking out for the infrastructure of the city. The fewer trucks you have going down the street, obviously everyone knows, you know, the less damage to the infrastructure, as well as, you know, it is greener. The fewer trucks we can put on the streets, the better it is for the environment.
And we've also looked at implementation for cities, and the cities that have the multiple vendors, a lot of times we can get them to become more messy. So it's, you know, for going after one service provider, if it's a cheaper option, it's more easy to manage, I think, at an administration's level and then talking with other cities, I think I'm quite inaccurate.
Oh, okay. You're saying administratively messy is what you're saying.
Yeah.
What, they not do a good job? But, okay. And then the other question I had was, in this package of our RFP package, we're strictly deciding if we're going to let the RFP out? That's what you're asking?
Correct. That's all we are asking is for authorization, permission to go out and seek the RFP. We're not asking for any decisions as far as privatization. This is all a preliminary so we can compare our services to outside.
This has nothing really to do with in-house though, at this point?
No.
This is strictly to see what a private hauler would do?
Yes.
To provide the service that we're providing at this point?
Correct.
So this has nothing to do with trucks at this point, has nothing to do with?
Correct.
Our trucks, I'm sorry.
No purchasing, no spending of money.
Yeah, I didn't see it, so I was like, well, maybe I missed it.
There's no expense in going out for this RFP. There's no changes to the system or even changes to the future at this point. It's basically a comparison evaluation tool.
Yeah. I mean, but let's be, I guess what I keep coming back to is that when we get into this, you know, the only way I think privatization makes sense is if everything's on the table as far as predominantly, or perhaps reducing staff, reducing headcount for us to, you know, because that's where the workman's comp or MICA comes into play. You know, I think we need to be very clear about that, that that is a distinct possibility.
Yeah. You know, so. I think you're right. I think, I think, I mean, obviously, I think the waste haulers, when you talk to the waste haulers, the waste haulers are going to come in, they're not going to want our people. They're going to want their own people. They're going to, they're going to have mechanized trucks, they're going to do their own separation, all of that'll change. But I think you have to ask the question now, if you go out with an RFP, I mean, we have to be blunt, and it's, it's a brutal situation. If you go out for an RFP and you get a good quote, then we need to stop now with hiring people and putting them on the back of garbage trucks and recycling. We need to use the labor pool, and we need to plan for that now. I mean, I don't know how else to do it. Do you?
No, that's the point. I mean, you know, I just don't see. I just don't see any, to realize the savings and to decrease the deficits that you're talking about, that's the only avenue that's there. So I just think, I agree with Mike, we just have to just be brutally honest about it upfront and just, just move on.
And I think the only reservation, I mean, I have no issue with going out for an RFP. I just worry that we're getting ahead of the people we serve, and they're, they're the owners of the corporation. I think it would be nice, I know it'd be a firestorm, but at least to hear from the public. You disagree with that?
Well.
And I think we have to be careful with our voice, yeah.
Just between you and I, you're asking me that question?
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think there's any harm in going out for the RFP right now, but at that point, then we could present the RFP.
Yes.
If we could present the RFP and what it would cost, and then that would be a good point for a public hearing, in my opinion.
Yes. And that's, that's what we have discussed. We have to have something to compare to educate the public with.
Yeah.
And if we don't, you know, if we were not to do the RFP, we really wouldn't have anything to compare it to, to educate them with.
If it's hypothetical unless we have some numbers and some, some services vision, whether it be the city of Quincy continuing or another provider, if we don't have our numbers and we don't have a plan in place, you know, on paper that we can talk about, it's all hypothetical, and it's not going to, it's not going to do the community any good.
Yeah, but I do agree with Mike that there should be some public input at some point.
Yes.
It sounds like you've got that.
Yes.
That's, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Questions, comments? Alderman Deesterhouse?
I missed your explanation of the 8,600 and 14,000. What, what, can you explain that?
Sure. The 14,987 number, that would be the total number of residents that would be, have service provided with four units and under in the household, so residential. The 8,600 is what we currently serve now, you know, approximately. So that is the difference. But in order to get an apples to apples comparison, as the ordinance reads, the city is a sole garbage and rubbish collector. And in order to get a good, strong, accurate bid, you know, we use that 14,987 number, and that way we can get an apples to apples comparison of if we are doing it effectively and efficiently versus what an outside hauler would do it for.
So what are those people doing now, if they're on private?
Yes, they're on private or they take it wherever. I mean.
So they are mandated to use the service?
Well, the way the ordinance states, the city is only supposed to have one garbage collector. It's, now there's just, people have just gone and got it on their own, I guess. So if, you know, if we were to look at that, there would be one sole collector.
I have a flat 14,000.
I do have one other question. That's not really a question, it's a comment. Would you point out to the public, one of the misconceptions is that recycling pays for itself. It's never paid for itself.
No.
It's a very expensive proposition, and our cost for what we pick up is very expensive.
It is very expensive.
We're saving the planet, I understand.
Correct.
But it's not, it's, it doesn't make money, it loses money.
It, it loses a lot of money. We actually receive right around 70,000, 71,000 per year, which nowhere near touches what it costs to run that program. So no, it is not a revenue generating program.
Yes.
I got a question. I think it's for the comptroller. Has to do with the.
Sherry Ray.
Sherry Ray. I'm interested in, in how much money currently resides in the depreciation account for the garbage trucks that are now needing to be replaced.
The 10 trucks we currently have are 12 years old. They fully depreciated. We depreciated them over seven years.
Okay.
So.
But it's a funded depreciation account. How much cash is in that account?
No. We have a vehicle replacement.
We did, we didn't fund that account? Why not?
No. It's, it's never been in the city budget.
I know. Well, I understand.
What the heck? That's crazy. Why didn't we put money in that account?
Well, you got to go back. You got, I understand, but you got to go back, you got to go back. Three administrations.
In the.
That's a decision they made.
We did include in the comparisons we did in the forecast, we did include for, setting money aside, for vehicle replacement. So when you look at the numbers in the, for eight new trucks or 10 new trucks, you'll see there's the debt service, which would include the payment on the trucks, there's a line item for depreciation and a line item for vehicle replacement. So the plan, that's why those far columns, you know, are so much higher, because we are planning for replacing the trucks if the city were to provide the service.
Sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Havermell.
You touched on it briefly, and I know this is throwing some curves at you because you, you know, this is kind of a little bit of new territory, but there, to Alderman Ryan's question, maybe you could address the vehicle replacement fund that's been in place before. That has never been funded, I don't think, for this particular replacement. It's always been for the rolling stock that's out at central services, police, and fire. Is that correct? I, I know, I.
Here's what it is. Truthfully, only the departments, or only the vehicles in water and sewer are really part of the vehicle replacement program right now, and I think it's because they're the only departments that have the funding to be able to put the money aside. But right now, I mean, we've got the fire, the fire replacement fund, the, that's home money that's going, being to the side, but there really is no general fund subsidized vehicles like forestry or garbage recycle.
They just come out of the budget as they need them.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and to be fair, I mean, it's easy to, in the abstract, sit back, and I'm not saying Alderman Ryan was doing that, but it's easy to, it's easy, let me, let me finish. It's easy to sit back and be critical, but let's realize, so there are some internal structural problems over the long term, over the last 15 to 20 years, and, and the public has to realize, it's easy to be critical, but then the alternative is, we have to make a choice. Do we cut services?
Or raise taxes.
Do we cut people or do we raise taxes? And I'm, I'm probably one of the most vocal and critical of raising taxes, so I mean, the other alternative is to cut services, which, which is really, it's a change.
What we're talking about, yeah.
Right.
Well, and that's what I wanted, I wanted to bring that up a little bit so we get in that discussion, so it's, it's not something that I think people have been negligent on. I think, I think it's more of a thing, not across the board negligent, but just to, you know, just the way budgets have been structured, so, but anyway, I've talked enough.
More questions?
Yes. Alderman Brink.
Not a Sherry, I want a Glenda. We talked about the collections, the city being a sole collecting service for the, for the city.
Yes.
Within that same ordinance, our city code, it says, "A city and any authorized commercial collector shall only collect household rubbish and or garbage contained."
Correct.
Wouldn't by our inaction of just allowing a commercial business to collect residential garbage, isn't that giving them authorization by not stopping them? I mean, they've probably been doing it for what, how many years?
Time.
I mean, I don't know. I would suspect.
Well, we're at this point now, we think.
Right.
I mean.
What I'm saying is, I mean, I think.
That's just asking the question of what other administrations did to ask it. Essentially, we're at here now, we have different private, you know, people to do it. If we're going to be true to our code and we're going to get the best cost, it's one provider. But I don't know what constitutes authorization. That would be more of a legislative branch, and that's something that if we present these numbers and the city continues to provide the service, then maybe the legislative branch would want to, you know, redo our code and make it more specific. How do we authorize private providers?
No, that's my, that's my understanding.
All right.
But I don't, I don't think we ought to be leaving here thinking that all our commercial vendors in town are violating city code, so.
We're not, let's be clear. It's not that they're violating, we're not enforcing the city code.
Right.
Okay? And whatever problems that brings, it brings, but we are not enforcing it.
I mean, we've all experienced, for the last three months, our code has said many different things about one topic, and often is a conflict. And so that's going to be one of the things that we work out these next few years is getting this code right. And when we make the decision on the garbage and recycle program, and if we borrow money from vehicle, we go in another direction, this body, we can correct our code to reflect what services are provided in the city.
And then one last question.
Yeah.
Assuming we go out to an RFP, we decided privatize it, would we, is it the intention of the administration to put that cost onto the water bill?
At this point, you know, we really don't have any determinations of how that would play out. That's something that would come before council after, you know, a lot of deliberation with the options that are there on to how to incur this cost.
Thank you.
More questions? Comments? Anyone? Anyone?
Well.
Go ahead.
The RFP, we're not obligated to anything if we decide to move forward with the RFP.
No.
So I don't want to cut anybody's discussion off. If somebody has something to say, let me know, but is this a finance function that?
It's, it's financing garbage and recycle.
So who makes the motion to move forward?
Anybody on one of those committees?
And you want to, and you want a motion or you want authorization to send it to the council for a vote, or you want to do it here?
No.
Okay.
Just the committee to allow to go out for the RFP process.
So that would be, that would be, let's see, Alderman Deesterhouse, Alderman Havermell, myself, Alderman, the whole schlog. Is there anybody else that I've missed?
Alderman Brink.
Alderman Brink? Okay, yeah. That's it. On the joint, both committees.
I see no harm in moving forward. I make a motion, we authorize release of the RFP.
Is there a second to that motion? Second? Okay. All right. And everybody understands the motion? Comments or questions further, non appearing? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Second item. Who's up? Okay.
Guess this is my night.
Yeah. Before the inquisition.
I guess. The second one is just to request the extension of the landfill contract, the recycling contract, and the yard waste contract with Evans Recycling. The landfill and the recycling contracts are up the end of December, and the recycling is up, or, I'm sorry, the yard waste is up the end of February. And we want to be able to negotiate those in order to have applicable time if we're going to extend those contracts out. So we want corporate council to have time to negotiate.
Short-term extension.
Yeah, short-term extension.
Yeah.
Is there length, are, what length are you asking for right now?
April 30th, isn't it?
Yeah. Sorry, the end of the fiscal year.
Right now, all of our, yeah, to get it to the end of the fiscal year, that way it's, it's.
It's calendar year right now, right?[1706.12]
Okay. Second item. Who's up? Okay.
Guess this is my night.
Yeah. Before the Inquisition.
Ex, I guess. The second one is just to request the extension of the landfill contract, the recycling contract, and the yard waste contract with Evans Recycling. The landfill and the recycling contracts are up the end of December, and the recycling is up, or, I'm sorry, the yard waste is up the end of February. And we want to be able to negotiate those in order to have applicable time if we're going to extend those contracts out. So, I want corporate counsel to have time to negotiate. Yeah, short-term extension.
Short-term extension, yeah. Yeah.
Is there length, what length are you asking for right now?
Until the, until the...
April thirtieth, isn't it?
Yeah.
I didn't...
Sorry, the end of the fiscal year.
Right now, Oliver, yeah, to get it to the end of the fiscal year, that way, it's...
It's calendar year right now, right?
Yeah, it's December thirty-first for the landfill and for recycling, and it's the end of February for the yard waste. And so, we like to get them all the same cycle, but also to match up. If there is a change in direction, it'll match up with the delivery of service on the RFP.
Okay, and this is just...
Just, just so, one, keeping you guys up to date, but just granting that that's, well, you know, granting council can go and negotiate that, of course, any extension will be before the council, so it's, you're not necessarily okay with the terms, it's just saying that you agree with getting everything aligned to the end of fiscal year.
I don't think you have much choice, to be honest.
Was there any rationale why they're the dates they are right now? Anybody aware of any?
No, there was no rationale, it's just the way it played, right.
We started to study the issue, and we collected information, but then it stopped.
Well, and it makes sense to get them all on the same page, because if you're gonna go out, you know, you're gonna want it all on the same page.
And I agree.
I don't think, and Alderman Deisterhouse can correct me, I don't think yard waste was ever tied to the other two.
They, yard waste didn't want to extend on that timeline, they wanted to extend a more convenient timeline.
Right.
So, that's why it's different.
Right. Further discussion?
We grant the administration permission to negotiate extensions on the contract.
Second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, that's it. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
All those in favor, aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Okay, on a serious note, a volunteer with the Quincy Police Department passed away, John Slater. Mr. Slater did a lot of work for the police department, did traffic studies, I hear he was a good cook, and he passed away recently, so we want to honor him with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. With no further business, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Dunn, if you could lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, call this, we need to order, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Here.
Mann.
Here.
Deisterhouse.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Holbrook.
Here.
Havermell.
Here.
Farha.
Here.
Sassen.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Lepper.
Here.
Mussolini.
Here.
Brink.
Here.
Heinecke.
Here.
Postlog.
Here.
Fourteen present.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Deisterhouse.
I move that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved as printed.
Second. We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
First petition is by Blessed Sacrament Church requesting permission to conduct a raffle and have the bond requirement waived from August eighth through September seventh. Also, the Quincy Tea Party requesting permission to extend the raffle permit number thirteen dash seventeen for two months to nine fifteen. The clerk recommends approval of the permits.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
Petition by the Mississippi Valley Council, number one forty-one, Boy Scouts of America Incorporated requesting consideration for a zoning change from R one C, single-family residential, to C one A, limited local commercial for a property located at twenty-three thirty-six Oak.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman. I move that be sent to the Plan Commission.
Second.
We have a motion of second to refer this to the Plan Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
By Denver Ecker Camp, Ecker Camp Construction Incorporated, seven thirty-seven South Fifty-seventh, requesting consideration for a three-lot subdivision of property located along South Twelfth and Jackson Streets, presently zoned R one C.
Your Honor. Yes, Alderman Mussolini. I move to refer that to the Plan Commission.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
By Stephen and Julian Bound, six oh five South Fourteenth for Christ Worship Center, requesting consideration for a special permit for a planned development to use the property located seventeen thirty-nine Oak Suites B and C for a church and cafe presently zoned C two.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
Move that be referred to the Plan Commission.
Second. We have a motion of second to refer this to the Plan Commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
By John S. Durie, the Durie Group Incorporated, twenty-eight hundred Broadway, requesting consideration for a special permit for a restaurant drive-through facility on property located at eight twenty-six Broadway, presently zoned D two.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman. I move that be sent to the Plan Commission.
Second.
We have a motion of second to refer this to the Plan Commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
By Adams Booth, twenty-seven twenty-five Parker Drive, requesting consideration for a zoning change from RU one rural to R one A, single-family residential, for a thirty-nine point ninety-three acre property located west of Spring Lake Estates Edition and Eagle Trace Condominiums. Your Honor.
Yes, Alderwoman.
I move to refer this to the Planning Commission.
Okay, second.
We have a motion of second to refer this to the Plan Commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
By Neiman Food Properties Limited, fifteen oh one North Twelfth, requesting consideration for a zoning change from R one C, single-family residential, to C two commercial for property located sixteen twelve North Twenty-fourth.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move that be referred to Plan Commission.
Second. We have a motion of second to refer this to the Plan Commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
Have the monthly report of the city clerk, city treasurer, Quincy Transit Lines, Recycling Division, city forester, and street cleaning department.
Yes, Alderman Farha. I move those reports to be received and filed.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
And I do have the bank statement of conditions, and this is for March. Second, let me get... Mercantile Bank, Farmers Bank of Liberty, Farmers State Bank of Camp Point, Town and Country Bank Midwest, Brown County State Bank, First Bankers Trust Company, State Street Bank and Trust Company, and Bank of Quincy.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman. I move those to be received and filed. We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered.
Do have public forum, and we do have two speakers tonight.
Okay, our first speaker will be Jeff Kirkoff. And Mr. Kirkoff, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Kirkoff, twelve twenty-one Spruce. Thank you for your time, with a special thanks to those that made the public forum a reality. Tonight's topic has more local impact. Common Core: Education at a Crossroads. Article three of the Northwest Ordinance seventeen eighty-seven, which eventually created the state of Illinois, explained, quote, "Religion, morality, and knowledge, being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind. Schools and the means of education shall forever be encouraged," unquote. Fifty years later, the city of Quincy was given the original responsibility to assist parents and others in educating the youth. Today, QPS one seventy-two is preparing to implement the Common Core, a system believed by many to provide improved standards and rigor in math and language arts. However, James Milgram, the mathematician who served on the Common Core Validation Committee, stated, quote, "I can tell you that my main objection to core standards, and the reason I didn't sign off on them, was that they didn't match up to the international expectations. They were at least two years behind the practices in the high-achieving countries by the seventh grade," unquote. English Language Arts Professor Sandra Sotsky, also on the Validation Committee, refused to sign off on the standards because she believed they were academically inferior. On the first page of your handout, the Missouri Education Watchdog reports that although forty-five states originally signed up for the Common Core in order to have waived the no child left behind requirements, states are starting to take a closer look. Virginia, for example, has reversed the original approval. Closer to Illinois, Indiana and May put a one-year hold on implementing the standards so that the actual cost could be studied. The second page of your handout also discusses the potential of indoctrination. An eight-minute video on the subject can be viewed by going to www dot illinoisminute men dot com backslash videos. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, at six thirty PM, Common Core will be discussed at the Tea Party Meeting at the Microtel, two hundred South Third. It will also be discussed in more detail, it will also be discussed at the September meeting. In more detail on this, on Thursday, August fifteenth, from six thirty to eight thirty PM at the Crox Center, you have a handout, a flyer in your package. Three Illinois and Missouri speakers will discuss this very important topic of the Common Core. Are there any questions this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Kirkoff.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Our next speaker will be Steve Kennedy. And Mr. Kennedy, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Steve Kennedy, I live at seventeen zero six Curtis Creek Road. Last month, I appeared before this council and spoke about the lack of enforcement of city ordinances concerning illegal connected sump pumps and foundation drains. I must say, I was expecting more support from this council than I received. Alderman Brink asked me how the city officials would enforce these ordinances, so I took it upon myself to contact the city of Belleville. I spoke to the head of the Department of Sewer Inspection, Mr. Royce Carlisle. Mr. Carlisle reported that the city of Belleville had contended with the same issues. He stated that the illegal foundation drains were the bigger issue and were easily detected. They use a smoke test to determine the problem, they blow a harmless smoke into the manhole, and the smoke comes out anywhere else other than the, from the fresh air stack of the home's roof, then there's a violation, and a notice to repair is issued. He also reported illegal sump pumps are found during home inspections prior to any home being sold. City inspectors can check this by placing colored dye into the sump pump pit, and it is seen in the sewer line, it shows a violation of the homeowner, is again issued a notice to repair. I know this is an unpopular topic, but I believe it's time for our elected officials to step forward on this matter, and I must ask you, if a community leaders are aware of the problem and failed to correct, to take corrective actions, does this not increase the city's liability? Lastly, I want to thank the sixth ward alderman for holding a town hall meeting regarding the hydro power issue. I believe this did allow the citizens to voice their opinion on this subject. I am now asking my fifth ward alderman to host a town hall meeting on the subject of sewers and other issues. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Kennedy, I was wondering, when you were doing your research with Belleville, did, were there sewer mains combined storm and household, the waste, the raw sewage?
That's a real good question. We didn't really talk about that, but I would, he said that the sump pumps, same issues. Foundation drains, easy to take care of, I mean, that's pretty obvious, but as far as they combine, I believe they do. I'm not quite sure, to be honest with you, but I believe they do.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Our resolution is Director of Utilities and interim purchasing director recommend approve the low quote of Richards Electric Motor in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars fifty cents to perform the remedial work on work to restore electrical wiring and allow primary power to be reestablished to the aeration blowers' motors.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Brink.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion of second to adopt the resolution, are there any questions?
Was it Gale that seconded?
Yes, Alderman Gale.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Havermell.
I guess this would be for David Kent.
Director of Utilities, David Kent.
Yes, sir. Hi, David. This is obviously, I mean, correct if I'm wrong, this is still dealing with the problem we had at wastewater.
That's correct.
Okay. How much more will we have, do you think? Do you have any idea yet?
As far as what's concerned, this is the last step. Once we get this new wiring run, we'll reestablish primary power to the unit. However, all of the equipment basically has to be replaced and rebid. We will look for final specs on that new equipment, probably by the end of this month. That will then be submitted to the insurance carrier, who's going to pay the bulk of the expenses once we get their approval, and we can proceed with advertising and awarding contracts.
Okay. And this is to get us off that thirty-five hundred dollar a week?
Right, right. It's basically costing us around thirty-five hundred dollars a week between the diesel fuel that we're using and the rental fee to do it.
Thanks, David.
Yes.
Any additional questions? Alderman Brink.
Yes, Your Honor. Mr. Kent, so, once we termination, that we get power and we get additional bids for the electrical motors, would that come before the city council also?
As far as the actual award of the contracts, yes, they will.
Thank you.
They will.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deisterhouse.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Postlog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Have an ordinance up for adoption, in the one-way on Broadway.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman. I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion of second to adopt the ordinance. Are there any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deisterhouse.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Postlog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Next ordinance is up for first presentation, and this is admitting fiscal year budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move that be read first time by title.
Second.
We have a motion of second to read first time by title. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk will read the ordinance first time by its title.
An ordinance admitting to two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen fiscal year budget hearing is a first reading by title only.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I believe this is just to get money in the right places. We can certainly have Sherry come up and explain that, but I would like to move that we waive section two two oh seven and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion of seconds to dispense with two two oh seven, adopt the ordinance. Are there any questions? Yeah, let's have Sherry explain that to everybody.
Okay, when a grant is awarded to the city, we know how much the grant's gonna be, and we try to budget appropriately. Well, what happened with the Safe Routes to School grant is, it was in fiscal two thousand thirteen, a hundred thousand dollar grant, we only received fifty-five thousand in fiscal two thousand thirteen. When the two thousand fourteen budget was presented to you, it didn't budget anything in revenue, but it, and it budgeted lower than what's necessary. So, I don't know if you've got the attachment in your packet, it shows you that we need to increase revenues by forty-four thousand, because we budgeted the other portion in fiscal thirteen, and we need to increase the expenses by ten thousand in order to finish paying the advertising for the Safe Routes to School grant.
Alderman Havermell.
This doesn't increase any expenditure over what we've already approved, other than putting it in the proper fiscal year of where we received the money and where we're expending the money, correct?
Right, right. Money's gonna come in that wasn't in the budget, in the amount of forty-four, and it's money in, money out.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.[1651.81] Mann.
Aye.
Deusterhouse.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Holschlag.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Have report of finance. Transfers to be $163,473.11, and expenditures to be $295,901.66, and payroll to be $120,867.22 for Halsen, Holschlag, Havermell Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the report be received and the vouchers issued for the various amounts.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deusterhouse.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Holschlag.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
So ordered. Any additional business, Madam Clerk? Alderman Gale, any new business?
No new business, Your Honor.
Alderwoman Mann.
No new business, Your Honor.
Alderman Deusterhouse.
Yes, Your Honor, um, in order to accommodate the back-to-school fare this Saturday, August the 10th, I move that we close Ninth Street from Lynn to Elm, and Elm Street from Eighth to Ninth Street, from 7:00 AM to 12:00 noon, August the 10th.
Second.
And appropriate authorities be notified.
We have a motion of second.
Barricades provided.
And barricades, okay, thank you, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bauer.
Yes, I got, uh, got a question for the police chief.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Rob, I had a person contact me about the school speed zone signs, uh, he says some of them say four, or seven to four, and some of them say when, when children are present. His, his concern, his concern was, he didn't care which way it was, but he thought the signs should all be the same, is that, are you familiar with that?
I understand, uh. Yeah, several years ago, we changed them all to read seven to four, um, there were some on 24th Street last year that were, were changed by the state, by, by IDOT, um, they're on Highway 96, which is also 24th Street. They changed the language back to, uh, when children are present, so, um, I thought it'd been changed back, uh, one by the night, after we had discussed it earlier, and, and saw that not only was it changed back to that, but they, they also apparently took off the no-cellphone stickers as well, so.
Okay, so they have.
We'll take a look at getting that changed.
They have changed them back, or they?
Yeah, they've, they've changed them not to seven to four, but they changed, they, they did change them, and apparently they take off the no-cellphone sticker.
Okay.
And they read now, uh, when children are present, so.
Okay, so they all read the same, and, no?
Those, those there read when children are present.
And we, we can't change those because they're?
The rest of them read seven to four. I'm going to do some checking, I'll get with engineering and see if we can get that changed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any additional business? Uh, Chief. Alderman Holbrook. Yeah, Chief. What does it mean when children are present? When they're in the street, when they're near the sidewalk, when they're on the playground?
The translation that local prosecutor uses, which is what is, uh, we base our arrests on is when they're in the sidewalk area. If they're on a playground, that does not constitute, uh, present, they have to be at least at the sidewalk, if not between the sidewalk and the street, or in the street.
Okay. Will we ever get to the point where we'll simply say, it's always going to be 20 miles an hour in front of the school, it doesn't matter if it's summer, it doesn't matter if the schools, at FedEx, my employer, we just drive 20 miles per hour, because I've never gotten an answer as to when I can drive 30, or when I have to drive 20?
Uh, that's the reason we went to seven to four in the first place, to make it less confusing, because of that interpretation of when children are present. Uh, other prosecuting attorneys may, uh, view that issue otherwise, but ours interpret that to be literally on the sidewalk or at the street. Um, the concern was that people weren't slowing down unless they saw children, it's not the children that you see that are in danger, it's the ones you don't see behind parked cars, et cetera, so that's why I'd prefer the seven to four, it just gets people to, to think about it and slow down, no matter whether they see the children or not.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Holbrook, any additional business?
No further business.
Alderman Havermell. I have no additional business, Alderman Farha.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Sassen.
No, sir.
Alderman Ryan.
No, thank you.
Alderwoman Lepper.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Mussolini.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, thank the citizens that did, um, make it out to our town hall last week, um, however, um, I know citizens that couldn't make it, and I would encourage them to contact us if they have an opinion, um, when it comes to hydropower or any other concerns, please call us anytime, and that, um, that'd be all tonight.
Very good evening, thanks for doing that, Alderman Brink.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, I have a question for Sherry Ray, our comptroller.
Okay.
Sherry, we just had a discussion regarding the video gambling, um, revenues, and currently, the revenues have outpaced the budget, and so have those additional revenues been earmarked for any additional funds, or?
Currently, they have not been earmarked, they are general fund revenue, and they are in the general fund unless some other decision is made.
Thank you. Your Honor, I would make a motion to, uh, send to the Finance Committee to consider, uh, earmarking the video gambling money to the Fire Equipment Improvement Fund.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussions? All those in favor?
What fund was it?
Fire Equipment.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.